Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners special presentation meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. This meeting is held in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act and a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the back of the room. The only first and only agenda item on our agenda today is a special presentation with Wayne Benner and Todd Wilchin. Wayne is the Deputy Secretary for State Elections and Todd Wilchin is our Lancaster County Election Commissioner. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. We're pleased that you could be here with us this morning.
And for those who don't know, I'm Todd Wilchin. I am the Lancaster County Election Commissioner and joining me this morning is Wayne Benner, the Deputy Secretary of State for Elections. I want to thank the Commissioners for inviting us here this morning to give a presentation on our elections. I know there's been a lot of attention for the past couple of years. There's a lot of misinformation out there that's being presented and I appreciate the opportunity to join you this morning with my colleague to give you some information and some facts about our elections. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wayne.
Good morning. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Wayne Benner. I serve as Deputy Secretary of State for Elections. I run the Election Division for the state of Nebraska and I've been in this position since September of 2017. Prior to that, I served as Sarpy County Election Commissioner since 2010. And why I talk about that portion of my career is that I come from the county perspective. I'm not from the state. I'm here to help. I'm from the county. I was picked from the counties. From that aspect, I come, since I do come from the counties, I understand and respect the position that county election officials and boards are with resources and the things that they need to do to carry out their tasks. And the dreaded unfunded mandate is something that I took with me when I came to the state of Nebraska. I was very happy as a Sarpy County Election Commissioner and I probably would still be there right now if it hadn't been for my predecessor retiring and my belief that if someone from the county did not step up, it would be years before new election equipment could be purchased for the state because our previous equipment was ending their lifecycle. So I stepped up, took on that job and was able to procure new election equipment for all 93 counties at not-county taxpayer costs. Between state and federal funds, I was able to do all of that. And even here in Lancaster County that had purchased a new machine previous, I overtook the maintenance of that machine. They took the risk. I told them, you know, if we ended up with new equipment, I wouldn't be able to do that, but I was able to do that. So that's the perspective I bring coming to this. One of the things I took great pride in was that we purchased that equipment, delivered that equipment and trained on that equipment by March 1st, 2020. And that was an important date because that's when things started to really ramp up. And my mandate for the 2020 primary was the primary was not going to be moved. So figure out a way to get it done. And working with our 93 county election officials and thousands of poll workers, many who stepped up for the first time to replace their parents and grandparents who were feeling uneasy about working the polls, we were the only state in the country to have a primary in the month of May that had polling sites open. Every polling site in this state was open with a minimum amount of poll workers and fully staffed for the entire 13-hour period. And that's something this state can take great pride in. And going through the November general election, we did not change one law in order to get our election done. We ran this election straight up, just like any other election this state has ever had. After the 2016 elections, a lot of emphasis was put on to election security. There was evidence to believe that foreign actors were trying to interfere or trying to find ways to get into our election systems, but they weren't very successful. And what we learned after the 2016 election is that we needed to work in many different ways to bolster our election security, but also we realized that it was a very decentralized system across the United States and foreign actors would not necessarily use ways to hack into our systems, but use social media and other avenues to spread misinformation, to spread doubt throughout the country about the election results. And that's what we've seen over the course of the last four years is that use of social media and misinformation and data that has not been properly vetted has poisoned the well on the integrity of our elections. Now, there's a lot of folks that believe that we as election officials on the county and state level aren't listening, but we are. And we took many steps in the 2022 election to give county election officials data, actual verifiable things that they could take back to, county election officials could take back to your boards and you as board members could take back to your constituents to show the security and accuracy of our election processes. Now, one of the things that we had always done in every election since 2000, approximately 2008, was doing manual audit of 2% to 3% of the precincts in the state of Nebraska, random draw of random precincts across the state, and we would manually hand count four races, three races on those ballots to determine whether or not the accuracy of the machines matched what the hand counts were total. And in each one of those, it was very minimal in the amount of discrepancies we found. Many were just light marks that the machine picked up as a vote when, or an erasure mark when the voter is told that you shouldn't erase the mark on the ballot and receive a new one. Now, based upon the feedback that this wasn't enough or my county wasn't involved in that, so how do I know my county was? The Secretary of State decided to expand that manual audit from 2% to 3% of the precincts to 10% of the precincts statewide, and it was determined that every county would at least have one. So every county in the state of Nebraska had at least one precinct that they manually audited three races, one federal, one state and one county of their, county race of their choosing to determine the accuracy of the count of the machines. Of the approximately 48,292 ballots that were hand counted, there were only 11 discrepancies in regards to the way the ballot machines counted versus the hand count. That is a error rate of 2,000th of 1%. I can tell you five of those were of light marks in regards to, again, the voter should have grabbed a new ballot and instead did an erasure mark or it was a hesitation mark, something of that nature. And three of those ballots were ballots that they knew existed but might have been misfiled in another box. And at some point, I'm not going to make a county go through 30,000 ballots to find one and we called it and it ended up being a discrepancy.
Sir, I just wanted to confirm those numbers, make sure I recorded those right. Forty-eight thousand, 292 ballots.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-two.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-two were hand counted.
Correct.
To compare, 11 discrepancies were found.
Correct.
Just wanted to confirm.
Yes. And so why that was important, the expanding to 10% was one, you'd have a greater number that you could compare to. But two is important to me that every county had one piece of data. So you only had 10 counties that had maybe one discrepancy out of all the ballots that they counted. Now, this manual audit is in addition to the many different security measures we have prior to and during the election. This was just after the election. Prior to each election, each county machine in the state of Nebraska is required to go through three test decks. And this is every ballot that the county would possibly be able to give out. And each machine is used, is tested three different times, one from a test deck marked by our vendor election system and software, one marked by the county election official and one person marked by a person designated by the county election official. Sometimes it's an employee, sometimes it's a poll worker, sometimes it's a random member of the public. Each one of those machines cannot be used unless they pass each one of those tests. We also conduct two mock elections. One is over the course of three to four days, allowing all of the counties to be able to count their ballots and then upload them to our state election website. And I'll go through that process in a moment. We also do another test later that all happens in four hours. This simulates the fact that if every county were to upload the same, upload results at the same time, that our load capacity would be able to, able to handle that and there would not be any errors. We do all of that prior to Election Day. Now, let me describe to you what happens on Election Day in the counting of the ballots because this is a system that we provided enhanced security after I bought the new equipment in 2020. Each one of our machines that account ballots, and let me be clear, are not connected to the internet at any point. They have no wireless capability, they have no Bluetooth capability. They are standalone items that cannot be connected in any way. There is not even a port to connect to the internet. So once the definitions are placed into the computer by a secure USB drive and then tested, once those ballots are counted, then a report can be generated of all the ballots that were counted out of that machine. At that point, a secure USB drive with military-grade encryption is used to take those results to an air-gapped computer. And by air-gapped is a computer that has no internet capability, have no Bluetooth capability, can't even run Solitaire. The only program on this computer is the program to compile the results. Those that flash drive is placed into the computer, the results are compiled, a printout can be printed out of those results. That can be compared to the report that was done out of the counting machine. Only at that point that you have the compiled results, would you take a different flash drive and place it into a computer with internet capability to upload to the Lancaster County Election Commission website and to our website. But before you press send, you can check that the results you're uploading match the ones from the air-gapped computer and they match the ones that come from the counting machine. And then even after you press send, you can make sure that what you, what you uploaded match what your current results are. And even after all of this, let me tell you that the results on any election website are unofficial. And they're unofficial until the votes are canvassed by the canvas board of the, of the county to make sure that the votes that were cast match the votes that were people that signed into the register. And if there are discrepancies, the county board can go in and figure out what those discrepancies, if any, are. So there are multi-level of security steps across the process that can be checked to maintain the accuracy and integrity of our election process. Now, the, the manual audit was just one of the two things that was done in the 2022 election to help address concerns.
Can I ask real quick about that 10% thing?
Correct.
You said that a couple of times, but it wasn't 10% of the votes in Lancaster County?
It was 10% of the precincts statewide, including three precincts in Lancaster County.
Okay. Which is not 10% of the precincts in Lancaster County.
It's 10% of the precincts statewide, 133 of which were in Lancaster County.
Right. I guess I was going to say there's 100 and some precincts in here, so 10% would be 10 precincts, but it was just three in Lancaster County.
It was 100, we have 1,322 precincts statewide. It was 10% of those, 132, three of which were in Lancaster County.
Yeah.
And the point being, if you're going to get one in every county, some counties have a population of 2,000 to 5,000 people. To get 10% in every county, you'd have to do well above 10% of the total precincts. They wanted to get every county covered was the way I understood it.
Correct. The second thing, and this was something that I heard quite a bit, is in regards to the 2020 election, and this is a statistic that I know you have heard because I've listened to your board meetings previously during public comment, is that in the 2020 election, there were 4,000 votes cast and 4,000, 4,500 more votes cast than people that had voter history. That is something that I was in a meeting with the person that made that allegation in March of 2022, and I called him on it because the data was old. He used a voter file from January or February of 2021. And as we all know, the voter file is a living, breathing document in which people are taken off and on the rolls each and every day. And one of the things that, you know, part of our prior process was, is that under state law, counties have 30 days to be able to put the voter history, which is separate from everything else. It's a separate document from counting the ballots. They actually scan barcodes from your, from the polling book to be put into the voter registration system for voter history. They had 30 days to do that. However, we did in previous elections, open up voter registration. Once we closed voter registration, not one voter registration could be processed from mid-October till probably mid-November. We would open up, because the counties wanted to process their voter registrations, we would open up that process. The second we opened up the voter registration system, people are coming in and out of that system each and every day because of felony convictions. 2,500 people died in the first three months after the election because we were going through a global pandemic. And they were pulling numbers from a January, February voter file and comparing them to the November election results. It was not an apples-to-apples comparison. But I did hear what they were saying. So I changed the process. I told the counties, you do voter history first and I will not put in, I will not allow voter registrations to be processed until all 93 counties put in their voter history, then canvass their elections, then certify to the state, and then I will open up voter registration. Based on this new process, the difference between the number of people that cast a ballot in the 2020 election and the people that had voter history was a net difference of 29 votes out of over hundreds of thousands cast. And I can tell you, a few of those were in one county, in a by-mail county in which individuals turned in their ballot envelope, but the ballot was empty. The clerk didn't realize this, gave them voter history and then realized once the ballots were open, there was no ballot. Those should have been rejected ballots, an easy mistake, they're changing the process going forward. So 4,500, which never existed in the first place, changing my procedures, it got down to 27. That's 4,000ths of a percent. We've listened to what people have said in regards to election integrity. We've changed processes. We've given you data in order for you to be able to make decisions for you and your county. And I have accepted any imitation by any organization, any group that wants me to come talk about these, come talk about these things. I spoke about it at the NICO meeting in December. They forgot to put it on the agenda, so they asked me to come back in June. I know many of you came and saw that presentation and I've gone to many different county commissioner meetings to talk about this. It is unfortunate that I will say that people are entitled to their opinion, but they're not entitled to their facts. And many of the data that has been given to many people that have spread misinformation across this state don't pass the sixth grade math teacher test in which a sixth grade math teacher, if I turned in my homework with just the answers, what are they going to ask you?
That's a little rude to say, don't you think? To say that people that have facts.
I said people are entitled to their opinion, not the facts.
But then you said that they can't pass a sixth grade math test.
The people giving them this information, not the people, the people providing this information, such as algorithms, will not provide the algorithms to people to be able to be independently verified.
Then you call them, you just say, well, they can't pass a sixth grade math test?
I'm saying is, they don't show the work. Your sixth grade math teacher would not.
You can't pass a sixth grade math test if you don't show me the work.
Let's stop this back and forth and we.
Let's be appropriate and kind to every, to people that are in the audience.
I'm, again, I'm not being critical of the people that are coming before you.
You're just saying they can't pass sixth grade math.
The people that are providing them this information cannot show their work.
Say that. Don't say they can't pass sixth grade math.
And I'm using an analogy.
Commissioner, we did invite them to, to give us information and let's proceed with the information. Thank you.
They, we were talking about a sixth grade math teacher requiring you not just to show an answer, but to show the process that you used to get to that answer.
I apologize if my analogies seem inappropriate, but any math teacher worth their salt is going to ask for the work before the answer. And I have asked for the algorithm for two years and I've never been provided it. No one, no state has been provided the algorithm. What you've been provided is a PDF, the answer. I have mathematicians waiting to hear the algorithm and we have not been provided it. I was told if I met with certain individuals, I would get the algorithm. I met with those individuals, did not get the algorithm. So show me the work. And what I tell you as Commissioners, anyone that provides you with information, I want the background work to be able to verify the answers. And right now, we have not been provided those. Sarpy County just concluded a one-year investigation at the cost of $80,000 of many affidavits and allegations. Not one of them outside of a voter who went from their county to the, back to their old county to vote, which we see a lot of people do because they want their right to vote and so they'll go back to their old polling site to vote. That was the only allegation versus a poll worker that was making inappropriate comments while at work. A one-year investigation, $80,000 spent, 52 affidavits examined. Again, show the work is all that I ask. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, please.
I, I did receive an article about, and I think it's, I'm not sure, Nebraskan Wireer, maybe? They wrote an article on no evidence of voter fraud in Sarpy County outside investigation fines, which was, I believe, the same one you were pointing, pointing to. And they talked about the $90,000 that the Sarpy County Attorney invested for an outside agency to examine all the claims before them, including 52 affidavits gathered. Going through what the, the article reports is that after that investigation, they found a handful of local problems that included a poll worker thanking a voter for showing an ID before there was a voter ID law. A poll worker was reported for taking photos inside the precinct that they were trying to promote voting on social media. This was reported because of concerns there might have been ballots involved. Interestingly enough, state law allows selfie in polling places. If you're so inclined, that is within your rights. So, um, there was one case of a wrong congressional ballot, but that was, the boundary lines had been changed in Sarpy County. That was one example.
Actually, for that example, I reached out to the county attorney. That was an impossibility. The ballot, the ballot didn't exist. As the former Sarpy County Election Commissioner, I was very, it upset me 10 years ago that I had to create two precincts that had two congressional districts in it because of how state law works and what have you. So when this last census came about, I worked with the new Sarpy County Election Commissioner, who was actually brand new at the time, to draw lines that there is no precinct in Sarpy County that have two congressional districts anymore. I even had, there was a precinct that had to be developed that just had 100 people in it to prevent that. So that, that situation was an impossibility or everyone would have gotten the wrong ballot in that precinct, so.
Very good. The bottom line is after $88,000 invested in an independent investigation, there was no substantive findings. Now, people are, as you said, people are welcome to take that for what it's worth, but this appears to be an honest attempt by the county attorney in Saunders County, Sarpy County, to evaluate the merit of the claims they were receiving. And literally no fraud was found, so.
And actually, I watched that press conference as well and the investigator was also a person that had his own skepticism about the integrity of elections. And through this investigation, he learned just how secure the elections in the state were really are and he was quite pleased and he was happy to go through this and learn about it.
Sounds like the right person was chosen.
Yes. Commissioner Hamilton?
And Mr. Ben, I ask you this question when we, in, at the, at the NICO convention. But you know, we have received many comments about multiple ballots being sent to a home. We've been said, been told that there are people who receive ballots who are no longer at that house and have not been at that house for many years and so forth. And can you just address that? I know that you did that there, but just for the public.
Yeah, we have heard many of those allegations as well. What I can tell you, in the voter registration system, when you are given a ballot, your, file is locked down. You can't be given another ballot unless you are asking for a replacement ballot and there's a procedure in the, in the system to be able to do that. So there is no way for a person to get 10 ballots. And in the affidavits that we have been able to garner the information from, we've determined that it's actually ballot applications that parties or third-party organizations do to get people to request an early ballot and not actual ballots themselves. To this date, not one ballot has been given back to an election commissioner or the Secretary of State's office that supposedly was given to a voter. You know, I, it is very interesting to me, if I were to get a ballot in the mail or a third ballot, I'd be running up to my county election office going, what is this? Not one of these purported ballots has ever been given back to, it's been, it's been thrown away, has been, has been what's been told. And we believe that's just the mistaken belief that ballot applications that look very official in some cases, and we've actually done different laws to curtail third-party groups from doing things that make it look like they're government documents, that have been confused six months, one year, year and a half after the day that they received them, have been mistaken for actual ballots. So the system won't allow for multiple ballots. You can replace, but there's a stacked procedure for that. Now, in the event, for whatever reason, give the benefit of the doubt that 10 ballots are sent to your house, first one back wins that has your signature on it, that matches your signature that's on file. I, I highly doubt that people are getting multiple ballots, but the security that's in place for early ballots would allow for only one to come back and only count if it matches your signature on file.
And I'll just add real quick, you know, I've only been in this position since February 13th. I was election commissioner for the city elections and the process, you know, the first day that I was hired was the day that we mailed out 60,000 early vote applications. And then over the course of the next couple of months is when we started receiving those back and they had to be signed and they had to be completed by the voters. Otherwise, our office does not send out ballots. I will say that an individual who frequently comes before you during public comment during the general election brought in their ballot saying that it was unsolicited, that. that it was mailed to him, and that he did not apply for it. And thankfully, we have a process in place where every application is tracked. From the very first one we get to the very last one we get is tracked. While that individual was in my office claiming that we mailed him an unsolicited ballot for the general election, I was able to produce his application that had his signature, and I presented it to him. And his response was, I'm surprised that you have that. And we have that, plus every other application that we received is stored, and they comply with the state law. We keep those for 22 months. And again, those are just another added level of security that we have in place to ensure that only one ballot is mailed out legally to individuals who have applied for it. Because if we do, Mr. Bennet did mention, if we do send out a ballot, then that person will not be eligible to vote at the polls. So again, there are many safeguards in place to ensure that one person, one vote, for one election.
Yes, I have, you mentioned, go ahead, Sean, I've already talked.
No, go for it.
You had mentioned the audit earlier. I just have a couple of questions related to the audit that happened. First of all, I guess, so what was the audit then that happened as far as the 2023 elections here?
In the city of Lincoln?
Yeah.
The Secretary of State's office is not in control of the Lincoln City elections. It's by your city charter.
Okay, so that's, the audit then is controlled by, if there was an audit, that would be just the county election commissioner?
I am not in control of the Lincoln City elections.
Well, and going back to the 10%, you said, I mean, we tied, you said there's 10% of the precincts, but it's pretty clear that there's not 10% of the precincts in Lancaster County. Do local election commissioners, not just Lancaster County, but other ones, have the ability to do further audits that they could hit, for example, 10%? Or even a higher percent if they wanted to?
What I will say to that is, is that there is no requirement in state law to do the manual audit at all. We ask the county election officials to do that, and because of the great relationship the state has with our county election officials, they do that. But if any county election official wanted to tell me to pound sand, they could. And, but because of the interest in elections, they all complied with our requests to be able to do this.
I guess I, I'm not concerned about their ability to comply with requests. I was trying to just understand, could they go further than 10%? Than, than, than the precincts you act and ask them to audit?
I'd have to get back and, and look into that, but there's a lot that goes into these. And so, we try to, and a small amount of time to be able to get everything done before the state canvass board under state law. So, we're trying to do something that is manageable for an individual county.
Yeah, and I, 10%, I mean, seems like a legit number, right? Like, if 10%, but we don't get 10% here in Lancaster County, and that's why I'm just trying to figure out if we have the flexibility to audit 10% of the precincts.
What I will say is that you got more precincts audited in 2022 than you have in any election previously. So, you had more data than you had previously, and the data that you had previously also confirmed the accuracy of our machines.
What's the plan then, moving forward? Will they, I mean, because it was 2%, then moved to 10%? Is the plan then to keep doing 10%?
Currently, we plan to keep 10%.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you guys to, I appreciate that you're wanting to hit every county, but when we have major populations, it seems to me like we should, we should want to verify close, you know, if we want to hit 10% Nebraskans, then we need to do 10% Nebraskans, including Lancaster County, not just give us 2% or 3%.
That's good feedback, and I'll take it back to the secretary.
Commissioner Flowerdale?
Yeah, I, I don't really have a question, just, I just want to say, it is clear, and has been clear for years, that the election commissioners and the Secretary of State's office are staffed by consummate professionals. You've done a wonderful job for our state. You have been absolutely thankless public servants, or I should say, unthanked public servants, that's a better way of saying it. And you have provided safe and secure elections, time and again, and thank you. And I'm sorry for the amount, the personal drain that this has taken. It's just what it is. Thank you.
Some of the questions that I had from, that we've, we've heard from constituents, you answered. You are proactive, and so I have no other questions.
I would just like to follow up. First of all, thank you for taking time from your busy schedule to be here with us this morning. And I commend Commissioner Yolken for taking time. We've heard a litany of complaints, and it sounds like you know them better than we do, but of concerns about election fraud. And let's be clear, everyone sitting up here wants free and fair elections. There's nobody up here who says we want any fraud taking place. So, we are following up based on what we've heard to ask the professionals to come before us. If you were squeamish, or if you were murky, it would cause further concern. The testimony I heard this morning, I find very factual, very driven by objective standards, and very comforting to me. And I'm gonna go one more step, Commissioner, that you'll understand. I care about the future as much as anybody in this room and anybody outside the room. I have 21 grandchildren. I want to see grow up in a beautiful country, in a beautiful place, just like the one I grew up in. And so, we're here to defend those processes that allow this dynamic and beautiful country to go forward in a healthy manner. Nobody's trying to undermine that process that I've experienced. I am concerned about the effects of social media. I think you're on to something there. We've had a number of things, and I think, to Chris's point, you got in front of almost all of them with the machines never connected to the internet. There is a flash drive that goes from the machine to a military-grade computer that transfers the data. Appreciate that. That's good for us to know.
Let me clarify, the, the flash drive is military encrypted. The computer is air-gapped. So, that has no internet capability at all. And that is a new procedure we put in after 20, based upon concerns of people trying, you know, the, wanting to attempt to hack into an internet-based computer to change election results. But again, all election results are unofficial, and that's why the canvas process is there to detect any anomalies.
Yeah. Appreciate that, because what I'm hearing is every time there's been a concern brought before you, you have taken steps to address it and to eliminate the reason for that concern. I appreciate that. You talked about the claim about more ballots than people that were reported. You addressed the investigation by Sarpy County. One of the things that's been brought before us by different members of the public is to outlaw machines, all hand-voting. You know, a lot of things used to be done when I was growing up that modern efficiencies have made better ways to do those jobs than we used to. Railway, railroad companies used to hire 30 guys to carry rail over to the tracks and lay it down. Now, they have machines that lay it down and save a lot of problems. I just, modernization is coming throughout our society. I can't see that hand-counting would be superior to the machines. Vote by mail, I will staunchly defend vote by mail as long as I have a voice in this. I know people who do it for various reasons. I did it, my personal experience, an interesting story. I've never voted by mail. I love to go get my sticker.
I put the stickers in the early ballot envelopes because I wanted to make sure you got your sticker, so.
Get to wear it around for a day.
My mother appreciates it. Trust me, she wears it all day.
So, I did serve as a poll worker in, during the pandemic. It must have been May of 2020 when we were scrambling for folks because a lot of that population was staying home. And so, I did serve with a gentleman who has been a poll director, I don't know how, 16 years, a long, long time, determined public servant. And that year, or that election, I did a mail-in ballot. First time I'd ever registered for one, I got it. I turned it in, went and worked in the poll that day. I've never breathed so many disinfectant fumes. Every time a voter went through, John followed him right behind and sprayed disinfectant everywhere. I breathed enough disin-
I will say I learned a lot in those two months about learning what a N95 mask was and how to procure Clorox wipes. Never thought that'd be in my job description, but for the last two weeks, I delivered a lot of that PPE to the counties. And I'll tell you what, that, access to that PPE alleviated a lot of fear of a lot of poll workers. And that's why I have a lot of great pride that so many people stepped up and that we were the only primary in the month of May that didn't move. And every polling site was open. Every person had the ability to either go to your polling site or vote early. Yes, we did have a 75% early, 25% polling site. But that just shows you the resiliency and the elasticity of our election laws. Why it was very important to me that I work on election laws every year to have that elasticity, that if it's 75% early or 25% early, we're still being able to get the election results. Approximately 90% to 95% of those counted and reported on election night. And where a lot of states, it goes multiple days after because they don't have the same laws and flexibility as we do.
Actually, if I could just follow up with, with what Commissioner Best said. During the 2020 election, during that primary, our entire board volunteered to work on, at a poll.
I actually did not. My wife was on the ballot.
Oh, yes.
My wife was on the ballot. I stayed off.
And I volunteered, however, we were awaiting my husband's COVID results, and so I didn't think it was a good idea for me to also go do it.
Okay, well, then, three of us.
We tried, we liked, we liked the idea.
The good, the good.
You were there in spirit.
So, just to follow up with that story. So, I got my card to register for mail, vote by mail, in the fall, and I turned it in. I wasn't working at the poll, and I never filled it out. So, I'm holding this. I've got it. They mailed it to me faithfully. And I go to the poll to vote. Interesting experience because John was still there. And we had to stop the process. I went off to the side, and John gave me the provisional ballot, let me fill it out, didn't prevent me from voting. And then we sealed that thing up like it was going to, you know, to this, a secret dispatch to the State Department. And then I put the provisional ballot in to confirm that I had not voted by mail because I still had the ballot. And I, you know, I'm not necessarily the most brilliant person, but I've watched the process carefully. If fraud's going on, I don't see any evidence of it. I see people like you who have great integrity and commitment. I thank you for that. And I'm leaving this process believing that our country is still in charge of our elections and that some people win and some people lose. It's disappointing at times, but I trust what we're doing as a country and as a county.
Thank you for those comments, Rick. I really appreciate that. I, that does give me, too, things that I'd like to kind of ask about because I have used, I think it's called Voter Check before, to follow my ballot, where I can see when it was actually mailed to me, when it was received, that sort, and could, is that a state function?
It's based on, off of a module off our state voter registration site. So, when we get an application in and it's processed by the county, the Voter Check will be able to say that you've received your ballot. Now, of course, you can turn in a ballot 120 days before an election. So, if you turn it in January, it's gonna sit like that for a while until 35 days before the election when the ballots could be mailed. Once the ballots are mailed, then Voter Check turns into your ballot's been sent. You've been given your ballot. You fill it out, you sign it. You turn it in, in whatever method you have. When it's checked in, Voter Check will tell you that it's been accepted, or it's been rejected, and then the reason for the rejection. And what I'll tell you is, is that based upon our new voter ID law that was passed, Voter Check will also be expanded to say, hey, you didn't provide an ID for, at the, or, if you, if there was a situation, the application, you did not provide the ID, there will be a rejection reason saying, well, we'll contact the voter. It'll also, if you want to check that, it will also say, you did not provide ID. Please provide ID so you can be given your early ballot.
That'll be an important feature for people to be able to make sure their vote counts, and then they can go and provide that ID.
Commissioner Yolken, real quick, I want to expand on that one more thing we do. It's additional level of security, an audit, if you will, is that when we do mail out ballots, I maintain a distribution list of individuals who are interested, campaigns, political parties, third parties. I do send out a spreadsheet daily containing the voter information for the ballots that we mailed out. I also, when I receive ballots, I will send out the same email. And so, there is another layer of auditing, if you will, Commissioner Shulte, to, again, make sure that people understand that the process is secure and that there are no gaps.
Thank you, and I do know people have used that to call people and say, hey, your ballot isn't in yet. You need to make sure you get it in.
As those of us who have ran, we use that information to chase mail, to, yeah, to follow up with voters, so.
I typically do vote at my polling place. I have voted by mail a few times. I like to vote at my polling place because there's people there that know me. I think no one could steal my vote because, whether I had a voter ID or not, because they all are kind of looking forward to me coming in. But I, the question that I have is, what is the county commission's role in elections? What, what is our port, our part in election activity? Essentially, we pay for things. We pay for the building, the equipment. But what other, do we have any other role beyond paying?
Yeah, I mean, you really don't.
Yeah.
You, as commissioners, have the ability to approve my budget.
Right.
But by state statute, I am appointed by the governor to administer elections in Lancaster County with the oversight of the Secretary of State. And so, and I do appreciate the county board's support on my budget requests. As you know, elections are getting more expensive. A lot more procedures have to be in place. And again, that comes at a cost to taxpayers. So, I appreciate your, your support.
I've always thought of it a lot like, like a number of the courts that we fund as well, right?
Right.
It's, it's, we might have the power of the purse, we might have, have budgetary authority, but fundamentally, the appointments are made at a different level, and it's, it's an independent organization.
I, I will, I will just add to that, that your authority, yes, is to provide resources, but there is state law that you need to provide the resources for-
Right.
Todd to, you know, if you cut poll worker pay, that's an issue. And, you know, if you provide, if you cut, oh, you can't print ballots. That's gonna be a problem in which that would, that would, someone would step in one way or the other to make sure, to the county has the resources to actually conduct the election.
Lose, we'd lose any court case that had us, you know, cutting the county attorney's office too, that-
But, for example, if Todd's asking for 20 new employees, you have the ability just to say 19, so.
I have a couple other questions. Mr. Wilton, he had said, you know, that city elections really are on you. I think the Secretary of State has shown that auditing 10% is not only legal, it's appropriate, it's maybe cost-effective. As you look towards future city elections, are you thinking about implementing an audit on city elections?
I'm looking ahead right now to 2024, and that's my focus because that will be the significant undertaking by our office. Because we have a presidential, we have two senate races, a house race, and multiple other state and local offices on the ballot.
And this will be the first election with voter ID?
And this will be, yeah. But looking ahead at 2025, and you and I have had this conversation on a couple of occasions, that, yes, if I were to choose a mechanism in which to audit the local elections, that would have to be a plan that I would have to submit to the Secretary of State, and he would need to approve.
Yeah, it just seems to me-
And I would do it before the election started. I, I know you've been critical that we didn't do it in 2023. I started in February 13th, and there was no plan for an audit when I started. And the election calendar had already been set, and it would have not have been possible to audit the 2023 election. So, but moving forward, yeah, based off the experience we have in 2024, I do, like I said, plan to implement some type of additional post-election audit in 2025. But again, that will be something that I'd have to submit well in advance of the election.
Which seems to me like a good option for a number of different reasons. Number one is, if we can, if, if we say that the elections so far were safe, that doesn't mean things aren't gonna change in the next year or two, right? Like, there could be a different type of threat. Right now, the thought is, some people believe it's the hardware, some people believe it's software, some people believe it's whatever else it is, but there could be some other threat right now, right? In a couple of years, so doing an audit of 10% sure seems like incredibly reasonable to me. I do appreciate the way that the- I do appreciate the way that the audit was done by choosing different state, federal and local elections. I think that was, that, that does seem like that's a good example for us to follow. Obviously, we don't have state elections or federal elections and the city one. A couple of the things that have come, that we've been asked about is, and Mr. Bennett, maybe you could help with this, we've been asked several times about the cast vote record and we've been told, hey, I've asked and they say maybe we can or can't do it. Can you just help me understand, is that something that we could generate a cast vote record and make available to the public?
So cast vote record is a capability that the systems that we purchased have. It is not something that we utilize. Other states may use the cast vote record to do what's called a risk limiting audit. That is not something that the secretary wishes to do based upon what we currently do here in the state. The cast vote record report is not something that the county election officials were trained on or are trained on. It's not something that we utilize. So under public records laws, anything that is not a record isn't something that has to be provided. And so since it is not a record, it doesn't exist, thus it's not something that we can provide, nor are we required to provide or to create anything. And I would be very wary of any election official to create something that they have not been trained on. Again, this is not something that we are, that we utilize in the state of Nebraska, thus it is not a record, period.
And I would expand on that, that there are three, according to state law, there are three records that I can provide following an election, and that is, I can provide a, for public inspection, the sign-in register at the polling location, I can provide a report of early vote, and then I can provide the results. And so Commissioner Schulte, when you ask for a cast vote record, even if I could produce it, it would not be permissible under state law.
The other thing you mentioned earlier is you mentioned, Mr. Bennett, that you bought the election machines. I've been in the, the, the room with our election machines. Who owns those election machines and the computer in the middle?
The state.
The state.
We own, we own the machines and let, have, and provide them out to the counties for their use.
We, we own one of our machines. There are six machines that we have at Lancaster County. One of them is owned by Lancaster County, the other five and the election work computer as Commissioner.
I stand corrected, but I did take over the maintenance of that machine, lessening the burden of your property tax players.
I was going to say, we need to call it.
Now, what I, what I, what I did tell Commissioner Shively and a few others that did buy that new upgraded machine, there was going to be a point in which we were going to have to go to a competitive bid process or what have you, and if the bid was not won by ESNS, then you were going to have to get rid of that machine. It was a gamble that was always going to have to be taken, and in this case, it worked out. But it was important to me for those that did make that investment that I took over the maintenance of that, of those machines, because I believe that to be a state responsibility. Because before, it was a county responsibility and it was the have and have nots. And taking it over on the state level allows all counties to be able to uniformly have the same system regardless of their taxpayer base, so.
If, if a county were to choose to switch to a hand count instead of an election count, is, I mean, is that possible? Could a county choose to do that in Nebraska?
Under state law, the counting method is chosen by the, is approved by the Secretary of State. So if the Lancaster County Election Commission wants to submit a plan to do so, it would be evaluated and either approved or disapproved.
Well, thank you once again. I really appreciate this. I appreciate the, your, your responses to some of the concerns that we've been listening to and we've been hearing. And this gives me clarity, certainly, on, on some of these issues. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so very much.
And yeah, anytime, commissioners. You know where to find me. I would say the same for voters and residents of Lancaster County. Any questions, feel free to contact the Election Commissioner's Office and we'll be happy to respond.
Thank you, Todd. I would just suggest that Mr. Bennett conduct a seminar on state purchasing machinery for counties to use. I think that should be a widespread.
Oh, look at, look at his eyes. He's not thanking you for that.
I like the concept.
I understood what the unfunded mandate word means and I took that when I came onto the stage. As you all know, I do travel to all of your regional meetings as well as, so if you ever want me to, I always speak to the clerks, but if you ever need me to pop into your meetings as well, happy to watch.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Really appreciate your time today and really appreciate your dedication to fair and accurate elections.
Thank you.
You and your staff and your volunteers deserve our thanks.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this doesn't work unless our 93 county election officials and our thousands of poll workers get the job done. I'm only one small piece of the, of the cog and it's really, you need to thank your poll workers because without them, none of this happens.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this special presentation. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
We are going to take a three-minute break. Three minutes, that's a little hard to count. I'll go to the computer, I can't do it by the clock on the wall. We will resume at.
We are, let's call the room to order. Will you please take your seats? Thank you. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 18th. I am Chair, Commissioner Krista Yocum. To my right is Vice Chair, Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my far right is Commissioner Roman Amundson. To my left is Commissioner Rick Bestin. To my far left is Commissioner Matt Schulte. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, you may begin with the location announcement.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Commissioners, that brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 11th, 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no further comments. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item two, Claims, two A. Approval of the claims process through July 18th, 2023. And I'll note for Commissioners, there's an amendment for payroll.
I move that we approve the claims process through July 18th, 2023, and include the payroll dispersments through July 12th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Two B, Approval of Claims to the Indian Center in the total amount of $14,217.14.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
I will abstain as my husband serves on their board.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item two C, Approval of a Claim to the Mediation Center in the amount of $7,900.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item three is the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote at the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, Amendment to the following county contract, C-21-0323, with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for the Lancaster County Youth Services Center to provide detention services to juveniles committed or placed with DHHS. B, Rightaway contracts with the following. One, Edna's Acres LLC, North 27th Street and Branch Stoke Road, in the amount of $1,179. Two, City of Lincoln Municipal Corporation, doing business as Lincoln Electric System, LES, Northwest 40th Street and West McKelvey Road, in the amount of $946. Three, Robin Moore, North 98th Street, Holden Street to Adderley Street, in the amount of $13,615. C, Grant Contracts with the Clyde Malone Community Center for the Yes2 Health Program in the amount of $30,900. D, Contract with the following. One, the Clyde Malone Community Center for the Take Pause Program in the amount of $43,354. Family Services Lincoln for the School-Based Therapeutic Services Program in the amount of $85,000. Hope Spoke for the Diversion Evaluations Program in the amount of $6,097. Four, Omni-Inventive Care for Parent Management Training Program in the amount of $8,824. Five, the Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults for the Volunteer Coordination Program in the amount of $38,372. Six, YWCA Lincoln for the Life Skills Program in the amount of $45,456. And then E, Receive and Place and File the Following Reports. The 2023 Annual Inventory of County Real Property, the County Engineering, and the County Attorney.
Move approval of the consent items?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item four is unfinished business. Four A, Special Events Permit Application from Gravel Worlds Gravel Adventures LLC for Bicycle Ride and Ultra Run to be held on August 25th through 26th, 2023, from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
We have a comment from the County Attorney's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. The County Clerk's office, when preparing the minutes for last week's agenda, noticed that there was not an original motion for approval for this item, and it was on last week's agenda, so we need to just procedurally clean that up, and that's why it's back before you today.
I would move approval.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five is a public hearing. Applications for Class C Liquor License for TCN Services LLC, doing business as Blue Catfish, 5700 West Raymond Road, Raymond, and a Corporate Managers Liquor License for TCN Services LLC, doing business as Blue Catfish for Tung Si Nguyen.
We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this? Is the applicant present? Please come forward.
I'll need to administer an oath. Yeah, the microphone's fine.
And you'll need to swear in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, please state your name.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. My name is Tung Nguyen. And I'm here for a Class C liquor license for my business.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
We're taking over the store formerly known as Tony's Corner. And I will be running the thing full-time, basically, and basically it's something convenient store. It's on the way to like, to Branch Stoke.
Right, stopped there a few times. So you, your intention is to continue the operations as they are?
Yes, everything the same. He did not have a liquor license for the past year or so, and I like to keep it going, basically. And just for small two doors, coolers, just for beer, and maybe a smaller rack with liquor, nothing, nothing too big. And I think I have the experience of selling and serving liquor, another safe, well, almost 50 years, so I think I manage it.
Very good. I see, and no other comments?
Just rolling through the paperwork here. You have completed all the appropriate licenses and requirements to take on this liquor license, Mr. Nguyen.
I believe this is the last step, but I would do whatever I need out to take care of it. This is priority, yes.
Okay.
There's no one else further to speak. We will close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys.
Commissioners, that brings us to new business. Item six, six A, Resolution in the Matter of an Application for a Class C Liquor License for TCN Services LLC, doing business as Blue Catfish, 5700 West Raymond Road, Raymond, and a Corporate Managers License for TCN Services LLC, doing business as Blue Catfish for Tung Si Nguyen.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this Class C liquor license. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item six B, Resolution in the Matter of Authorizing the County Board Chair to Sign an Agreement with Felsburg Holt &amp; Olvig for Preliminary Engineering Services Related to a Federal Aid Project in North 14th Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road.
Good morning, Lancaster County Engineer Pam Dingman. This item and the item that precedes it are agreements with Nebraska Department of Transportation. This is for the improvements from, on North 14th Street, from the city limits all the way up to the north end of the county. This will add shoulders to the road and expand the road to be a 24-foot modern top road, so we're super excited about it. This is a federal aid project, and most likely, I mean, this, this project right now is estimated at about a total cost of $12 million. I expect by the time we construct it, it will be more. It is also approved for 80% federal funding, so this is significant to the citizens of Lancaster County.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement.
I really appreciate your work, Pam, and continuing to improve, trying to improve the infrastructure of our county, and specifically when you've gone out and found some federal dollars to make these projects happen, it's really nice, so keep that up.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item six C, An Agreement with Felsburg Holt &amp; Olvig for Preliminary Engineering Services for a Federal Aid Project on North 14th Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road. The total agreement amount is $16,200, of which 80% will be paid using federal surface transportation block grant funds, and 20% will be paid using county funds.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Commissioners, as you're aware, when we do get federal aid, it does have some strings that come with it and a lot of process and procedure. Nevertheless, they're saying, you give us 20 cents and we're going to give you a dollar, so I believe Commissioner Flowerday, you've said you'll support all of those that I bring forward. I'm not sure.
We've paid the money to the federal government. Let's, let's recapture every penny we can for the community.
I'm not sure that you realize that was giving me permission to proceed until apprehended, but I'm taking it.
I think I knew what I was doing.
I'm taking it. That being said, the previous agreement was to lay out the preliminary engineering for this project. This, this item and the item that precedes it are to lay out the environmental engineering for this project.
Move approval of D.
Second.
If we were on item C.
Sorry. Sorry, we needed to approve C, and then I just spoke on D. I apologize to everyone.
C, I move approval of C.
Okay.
I will second C.
Okay. We, we have a motion and a second to approve item six C. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, which brings us to six D, The Resolution in the Matter Authorizing the County Board Chair to Sign an Agreement with Felsburg Holt &amp; Olvig for Professional Environmental Services related to a Federal Aid Project in North 14th Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road.
I move approval of D.
And I second D.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Six E, An Agreement with Felsburg Holt &amp; Olvig for Professional Environmental Services for a Federal Aid Project in North 14th Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road. The total agreement amount is $9,700, of which 80% will be paid using federal surface transportation block grant funds, and 20% will be paid using county funds.
Move approval of E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Six F, A Contract with Subsurface Incorporated to Provide Cured-In-Place Pipe Culvert Lining. The cost of the county is not to exceed $327,425.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Cured-in-place pipe culvert lining is a process where we pull a liner through a pipe, and a fiberglass material is injected into that liner, and then an ultraviolet light, similar to what bakes on your fillings, is run through the pipe repeatedly until it creates a new solid structure within the pipe. So why is this significant? Well, this is how we are trying to approach wherever possible, wherever it makes sense, pipe rehab or pipe replacement on paved roads. So you might, I mean, of course, be interested to note that we can do this entire process without closing a road, and I've heard that the people in southern Lancaster County have construction fatigue, so hopefully that helps with that. That, that being said, you might also be surprised to find that we are recommending this for several locations in southern Lancaster County. We have found that the company that does this for us can do two or three of these a day. So it's very quick, it's very efficient. It means that we don't have to cut open the road and replace the pavement, and if we can get to the pipes in time, this is a better solution than, of course, digging up the road.
Move approval. This is a very, very good innovative project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to six G, Release of the Eastment for Utilities on a 10-foot Utility Eastment between lots 12 and 13, Brush Creek Estates.
I see no one to speak on this. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve this release of easement. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Six H, A Special Events Permit Application for Eric Moser with Good Life Racing LLC for the Great Plains Gravel Triathlon Event to be held on August 12th, 2023, from 6:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Is the applicant present? Please step forward. Welcome.
My name is Eric Moser, 2840 Legacy Commons Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska. Asking for approval of the use of, you know, Lancaster roads for the Great Plains Gravel Triathlon. If you're not familiar with the triathlon, it's a swim, bike, and run event where we'll be swimming within Branch Stoke. We do have approvals from Nebraska Game and Parks and Branch Stoke Superintendent, Superintendent. We just got approval from Seward, Lancaster, or I'm sorry, Seward, Butler, and Saunders County, and the Lower Platte South to utilize the gravel roads. But as this affects Lancaster, we will be utilizing Branch Stoke Road from Lebbers Point on West to Northwest 140th Street, to where we'll then exit Lancaster County into Seward. We'll also use West Ashland Road and County Road, I believe it's 26. And then we'll also come back on Agnew. This is August 12th, so we're going to start at 6:45 in the morning. You know, it's a Saturday morning, not very many people are out. We will have personnel signage, not placed permanently into the ground, but just to direct participants. We're not expecting too many participants, you know, as this is our first year, we're at about 50 right now. So we'll have quite more volunteers than what we've got for participants, and we'll be able to take care of them safely. So we are asking for permission to utilize the Lancaster roads.
Yeah, appreciate you bringing this event to our county. On August 12th, we've got plenty of time to start working out here and get ready.
Athletes like us.
But I would just say, there are, in the reports, we've got a letter from the Sheriff's Department and the Engineering Department. You're aware of those and the, what they're proposing, and you find those acceptable.
I find those acceptable.
Really good. I, I would move approval.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second. I believe, is this our third event, gravel event, this season?
Third or fourth.
This is pretty exciting.
Upcoming, yeah.
Yeah.
We have the kind of gravel roads here that just draw people.
We just need to keep our gravel roads. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Brings us to six I, Special Designated License Applications from Fukar Incorporated for two events at Prairie Pines Nature Preserve, 3100 North 112th Street, Lincoln, on the following dates, August 5th, 2023, for the Run for Pines event, and August 26th, 2023, for Feast on the Farm event.
Good morning. Good to see you here again. Yes, good to see you as well. Eric Pomizel with Venue Catering and Events. And again, we're looking to do the two events at Prairie Pines Nature Reserve. For Run for the Pines, we'll provide libations for the runners after they have run their race. And then for Feast on the Farm, a lot of food vendors, and we'll be there providing libations as people go around and enjoy vendors' food that day.
It's like you've got a lot of training to do, Rick.
Boy, I guess, but the libations are. I would again move approval of this.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we, was that for both or one? I'm fine with it being both.
It's both, I think.
It was read as both.
Yes, it was both, if you're asking.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to six J, Authorize Daniel J. Zieg, Chief Deputy County Attorney, to sign a termination of record lease for a memorandum of lease dated November 1st, 2000, and recorded with the Lancaster County Register of Deeds on November 9th, 2000, as instrument number 2000-053578.
Daniel J. Zieg, Chief Deputy County Attorney. This is what I spoke to you about last Thursday. This was some industrial bonds out there on the Garner Industries. All information that the bonds have been paid off at this point, and they want to sell the property. We just need to sign the release for the lease that was, that was in place.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. I see no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Brings us to item six K, Authorizing Barb McIntyre, Lincoln Lancaster County Human Resources Director, to sign the following U.S. Department of Homeland Security documents in response to evidence request for an H1B petition. And I'll read all three motions. Notice of Entry of Appearance as an Attorney for an Accredited Representative, Petition for a Non-immigrant Worker, and an H Classification Supplement to Form I-129.
Good morning. How are you guys today? We submitted the visa application back at the first of the year to go through the lottery process, and they only select about 15% of those submitted to a lottery, so we are taking a different path to submit the forms now to certify Lancaster County as a research organization, which would exempt us from that lottery or the cap for H1Bs. So we just need some permission to keep working on these, so I can sign the documents to keep it moving through the process. We only have the one H1B visa candidate right now, but if we would become exempt, it would enable us to hire individuals with specialty qualifications or degrees easier because we would not have to submit to the lottery, and hope we get selected through that path, so. Any questions on that?
I guess I do. So you said we only have one applicant. I just want to clarify, so this is an applicant for a county job, not in the county?
Nope, she's in the county. She's been working, but because we do not have the correct visa status, we had to suspend her. So right now she's on an unpaid leave until we can get through the process.
Okay.
She's a staff attorney in the District Court Office, so.
Okay.
Yep. Does a lot of research. We just got to prove that she's doing the research to become a governmental research organization. So they've submitted a request for evidence after our H1B petition. We just have to submit that evidence that we are doing research, and then can prove that she can get the H1B Specialty Occupation Visa, so.
And just, so I understand this might, obviously, I haven't been on here too long, but, so do we do this per individual employee whenever there's an employee that meets this need? Or is this like a, is this like an umbrella policy that's saying, anybody can do that now?
When they would qualify for a specialty occupation, we can do the H1B petition, but we have five total employees across the county that are currently on some type of visa status as non-resident aliens. A lot of them are on student visas that have been extended, so not all of them would qualify for the H1B, but it just depends on their visa category and type. But this would allow us to hire many more, and a lot of them would now qualify if we can get this cap exemption in place, so.
I think the key is the specialty, specialty degree. So you see a lot of them, they're STEMS, they're, it's got to be some sort of a IT STEM programs, attorneys.
Having a CDL, a lot of county engineer employees.
Specialty licenses.
That's a specialty occupation, so we could get a lot more people that way, which is nice.
So there's a very specific criteria that applies. It would not just be to any job.
Yeah, it's, it is not a simple thing to qualify for, for an H1B.
Correct.
The process, for sure.
I would move approval.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second. Did we have a comment? I see no comments. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to item six L, Recommendation from the Personal Policy Board to Revise the Classification of Accounting Operations Manager.
Hi, Commissioners. This is the request to update the job classification for the Accounting Operations Manager, which is one of the more senior people in our department. It is currently vacant, and in the process of getting the job relisted, we looked at the classification, and as you'll see, it was last updated, I believe, the year 2000. Several of the things currently in the classification kind of reference like older mainframes and some more computer programming focus that isn't the focus currently and probably shouldn't be the focus occurring forward, so we're updating that. We worked with HR on this and presented it at the Personal Policy Board. As part of this, we're also narrowing the focus to focus on the accounting side, and we're working to probably bring something in the future, looking at some of the payroll duties among the payroll staff.
I'm genuinely excited I get to say this. Do you want to state your name for the record?
Yes. Matt Hanson, Lancaster County Clerk.
We wondered who you were.
Did you have anything to add? Did you have anything to add?
I didn't. I was just going to come up if you had any questions for me, but we worked collaboratively on this, so.
Thank you. I see no questions. Thank you very much.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this recommendation. Please call the roll.
Flouride.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to item six M, Contract with Trade, Contract with Trade to be Environmental Services LLC, to provide annual service to the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County Hazardous Waste Services. The cost of the county is not to exceed $5,000.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Schulte.
Yes.
Flouride.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Six N, Contract with Forest Lawn Funeral Home for Cremation Burial Services, as outlined in Lancaster County's General Assistance Program, beginning May 1st, 2023, and ended December 31st, 2028.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. This particular contract is with Funeral Home out of Douglas County. There was a resident who passed in Lancaster County, and then an autopsy was ordered. Autopsies are completed in Omaha. This particular Funeral Home ended up with the individual, and so we needed to have a mechanism in place to pay them for the cremation.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Ametson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Flouride.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to item six O, Contract with El Centro de las Americas for the Youth Program in the Amount of $105,581.
And this particular contract is where we were able to go out and seek state funding to supplement one of our youth programs, so this is state funding going to El Centro de las Americas for their youth program.
Move approval.
I second.
So just to clarify, so this is the actual receiving of the contract, or is this an application? Because sometimes we have to approve applications.
No, this particular one is the actual contract with El Centro. Yep.
So the $105,000 we're receiving from the state, and then we're turning around and giving that directly to the organization? We don't retain any portion of that?
Not in this particular grant, we're not. No. This grant does not allow for indirect, and grants where we're able to claim any indirect, we do.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Flouride.
Yes.
Yocum.
I will abstain as I serve on their board.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Brings us to item six P, Contract with Rise &amp; Shine to Provide Annual Service for Janitorial Services for Three Public Building Commission in Lancaster County Facilities. The cost of the county is not to exceed $24,240.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Commissioners, that brings us to public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Before we open public comment, I recognize that we have many people here to speak, and some of whom have not been in these chambers before. We have an hour allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have five minutes. That means we'll have time for 12 speakers. Each speaker needs to write your name on the log at the podium. Please print legibly and state your name clearly before you begin to speak. I'll ask that you form a line, as I see you already are, have begun to organize yourselves, and I'll recognize and call forward citizens who wish to speak. Each speaker will have five minutes. We have a timer on the podium that will indicate when you have one minute left by changing from green to yellow and then to red when your time is up. And I ask that you stop promptly at five minutes. You'll see that your time begins when you begin to speak. Because we have more people present than we have time to hear, I'll also ask that you not be redundant, meaning that if your points are the same as a previous speaker, consider passing or speaking to a different point of order. And if you don't need the full five minutes to make your point, then we'll be able to hear from more of you this morning. During public comment, the Commissioners do not respond. We do not answer questions, but we are here to listen to you and to hear your concerns. And in the announcements at the end of the meeting, information will be shared about how to reach Commissioners for further conversation. And I will recognize you first.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Reverend Kirstie Engel, K-I-R-S-T-I-E-E-N-G-E-L. I'm the Spiritual Leader at First UMC in Lincoln, and I'm the Co-President of Justice in Action. As a few of you know, Justice in Action is an interfaith justice organization that represents over 20 different faith communities here in Lincoln, Nebraska. Our different congregations have over 4,000 members, and our goal as an organization is to bring people together, to change policy, to make Lancaster County a better place to live for all of our neighbors. I want to tell you a bit about how we work and why we are here. First, we listen. In the fall of last year, we hosted house meetings across all of our faith communities, and we asked people, what keeps you up at night worrying? It was out of those conversations that we determined that we were most concerned about access to mental health, and too many people being placed or kept in the county jail pre-trial and for nonviolent offenses. We did months of research where we interviewed experts both locally and nationally, and decided on solutions that we would ask you, our elected officials, for at our NEMI Assembly. At our NEMI Assembly on May 1st, 105 people came together to show support for Mental Health Navigation Program and an increase in access to diversion programs. As people of faith, we believe in rehabilitation over incarceration. We want people in our community to have access to programs that give them the care and help they need to live positive and productive lives. We are extremely concerned about our jail becoming more and more full. We know that our diversion programs are successful, and while we hope that the new Director of Community Corrections will continue to create more restorative programs, we also knew we couldn't just wait and see. We felt like the increase in the corrections budget of over $1 million warranted a response, so we wanted to come and make our voices heard. Briefly, if you're here today supporting Justice in Action, will you please stand? These people are here today to ask you to make restorative programs a possibility and a priority, to be proactive in finding and funding alternative programs like diversion that will give people the care that they need. We pray that you will have an open mind and heart as you listen to others present their stories or share facts about this proposed increase to the corrections budget. Thank you for your time.
Did you sign in on that?
I sure did.
Thank you, and we could pass it over.
Of course.
So that you can, yeah, please pass the clipboard. Thank you.
And the pen.
Important go-togthers.
Can she do it after she comments? So we can keep going.
We'll let her sign in and pass it back, and then we'll get a pretty fast.
We can bounce it back.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people to comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
My name is Pastor Toby White, T-O-B-I-W-H-I-T-E. I'm pastor of our Savior's Lutheran Church here in Lincoln, and I serve as Secretary of the Board of Justice in Action. Just over two months ago, I recall standing on a stage with Commissioner Vest, reminding him that we would follow up with our request that the county delegate up to $500,000 toward the diversion programs, in an effort both to minimize the overpopulation in the county jail, as well as help nonviolent offenders get the help they need, so that they can turn their lives around and be productive members of society. As promised, we're back. And we are incredibly disappointed to see that instead of such a push, the commission is considering over $1 million toward rehousing many of our current inmates in other counties across Nebraska. In case anyone is under the assumption that they're talking about contiguous counties, I believe, inmates could just as easily be going to the western counties of the state as they could Gage County. In my role as pastor, I have seen how building quality relationships and establishing support systems have decreased the recidivism rate for those who participate in the prison ministry at my congregation. But inmates who are shipped off to other counties not only lose those support networks, their families have a more difficult time with transportation to see them, their lawyers will bill for travel time when they need to consult, and this is an undue hardship on the inmates. Add to that the simple fact that far too many inmates in our county jail are there because of lack of mental health care and/or addiction. The last thing to deter their behavior is punishment. What they need, and what has been shown to work, is help. And yet, this budget takes the easy road in an effort to bide your time until you can build a new jail and house more people. That is not justice. Our own county attorney established many of the diversion programs, actually, all of the diversion programs we have, and yet we're still waiting for him to implement them more broadly. Our research has shown, yes, we have done extensive research, anyone can read it at Our research has shown that not only are our diversion programs successful in mitigating recidivism over the following three-plus years, but crime rates do not increase, and economic and employment rates benefit from diversion programs. For those in the back, that means the county saves money, more people enter the work pool, less people go to jail, and more people are available to purchase groceries and buy gas and pay taxes, which to me sounds like a win-win. What I can't understand is why such a logical approach gets pushed under the rug. Commissioner Vest and Commissioner Yocum, you were both there in May. You and the people in this room have power to make important decisions, and this is one of those. You were eager to work with us in May in front of 1,100 people, so let's stop kicking the can down the road and start making wise decisions for the sake of our community. You have that power, so let's start using that together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Judy Kelly, and I'm a member of the Unitarian Church of Lincoln. I'm also on the Justice in Action Board of Directors and the Criminal Justice Steering Committee. As Reverend Kirstie shared, we are here today to express our concern that Lancaster County needs to budget $1 million for boarding contracts due to overcrowding in the county jail. We understand this is an immediate crisis situation, and Corrections Director Brad Johnson is doing what he must to accommodate the jail's population, but we nonetheless are not supportive of this type of expenditure. We are people of faith who believe in the values of rehabilitation over punishment, restoration over isolation, and the power of grace and community for all of our neighbors. During the months of our Criminal Justice Reform Research Team's work, we found that as many as 2/3 of the men and women in the jail are awaiting trial. In other words, they're still considered innocent. And we learned that a large percentage of people in and around the edges of the criminal justice system are substance abusers or have untreated mental health issues. These people should not be put in jail, they should be put in treatment. By the way, when we met with County Attorney Pat Condon last week, he also believes the criminal justice system is in an inappropriate place for people with mental health issues. That is why we are advocates for increasing the number of people put into community corrections, diversion programs. Diversion programs can be hopeful and helpful opportunities to keep people out of jail. More participation, easier access, and additional diversion programs can address this. It's critically important. Diversion programs divert people from going to jail and avoid them having a criminal conviction, which allows people to lead full and productive lives. National data shows that as little as two days in jail can cause a person to lose their job, interrupt their housing, and lose custody of their children. Lancaster County's Community Corrections diversion programs have proven to be successful. A full 80% of people who successfully complete diversion programs do not return to jail within the next 36 months. That statistic, for people who don't go into diversion programs, is 30%. Only three out of 10 people will avoid returning to jail. We recognize that increasing the number of people in diversion programs is a shared responsibility across different departments within the county. The Board has funding, oversight, community corrections operates the programs, and the county attorney and judiciary must determine eligibility for participation in diversion programs. Ours will be one of the very first requests to meet with the recently hired Community Corrections Director Jeff Kilpatrick, when he starts on August 14th. We have also had a series of meetings and conversations with County Attorney Pat Condon, who, as Reverend Kirstie and Reverend Toby said, initiated the diversion programs in Lancaster County several years ago. He said he would like to see more people in diversion, but that housing is a problem in some of those instances. Our most recent meeting last Thursday, County Attorney Condon made a commitment to continue to work with us, to identify what barriers exist and what opportunities there are to expand diversion programs and keep people out of jail while maintaining public safety. What is obvious is that all the involved entities in Lancaster County must work together to move our community forward. It seems as if the quarterly Justice Council meetings are primarily used for information sharing among the various public safety and criminal justice parts of Lancaster County government. What if that forum was used for action and progress and brainstorming for the shared goal of increasing participation in diversion programs? We recognize the Board must respond to this emergency situation. However, we implore you to also take a longer view and reduce jail population through increasing diversion programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Beavins. I too am a board member with Justice in Action, and I have served on the Mental Health Steering Committee. Yesterday, I had my annual checkup, and my physician asked me, have you had any major medical issues this year? And my answer was no, I lead a rather boring life. And she said, that's great, that's what we want. And I hadn't planned on making a statement today until that appointment, because it dawned on me that my genetic predispositions, my privilege, and my voice require me to stand up for those who have not been dealt that same hand. Until 2020, I would have never called myself privileged. My father grew up here in Lincoln in the German Bottoms, in a two-bedroom house with four siblings. He did not attend college, and he worked more than one job when I was young. My mother, on the other hand, rode her horse to a one-room schoolhouse outside of Hastings, and she remembers having a garden and raising chickens, not as a hobby. It was out of necessity. So privilege was not a word I would have ever used to describe myself or my family. But I'm here today to tell you that my privilege is why I have a master's degree in education, I own a home, and my husband and I have had the opportunity to raise four adult children. Children who have received excellent public school education here in Nebraska, received excellent health care and mental health care along with that, education, and most importantly, they know their voice matters. And I'm here to tell you that all voices matter. Individuals in our county jail right now don't know that their voice matters and that they matter. Brad Johnson indicated to our organization that nearly every person incarcerated in the Lancaster County Jail at this moment either suffer from addiction or mental health issues. They're in need of care and not incarceration. I'm here to urge you to spend my tax dollars on care and treatment of my fellow Lancaster County residents through diversion programs. I ask you to spend those dollars on improving lives, not on growing our jails. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to this podium.
Hello, good morning. My name is Dr. John Spilker. I'm a professor at Nebraska Wesleyan University. I'm a member of First United Methodist Church here in Lincoln, and I'm a board member of Justice in Action. I think that tax dollars are a sacred trust that the citizens place with a body of elected people. I oppose the $1 million funding to house people in jails outside of Lancaster County. This move increases funding to build up mass incarceration of nonviolent offenders in Lincoln, Nebraska, and Lancaster County at large. It denies funding toward rehabilitation and restoration. Incarcerated people have families. Incarcerated people have families, jobs, homes, as they await their trials. People who are charged with nonviolent offenses need resources to rehabilitate and stay in their jobs, with their families, in their homes. Those who cannot afford attorneys need to be close to Lincoln to visit with their public defenders who are here in Lincoln. Boarding contracts connects and hearkens back to convict leasing. This $1 million funding dehumanizes incarcerated people and their families. It opposes the research published by the Equal Justice Initiative, that's EJI.org, and Michelle Alexander's research in the new Jim Crow. It erodes our humanity, our community, and our society. In humility, as a tax-paying citizen of Lincoln, I ask the Lancaster County Commissioners to stop the spending of $1 million, a large sum of taxpayer dollars, to build mass incarceration in Lancaster County. Instead, we could reduce Lancaster County's role in mass incarceration. I ask you to divert all of these funds, $1 million, to rehabilitation and restoration programs to keep people out of jail, at work, with their families, and contributing to our society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Larry Ortega, and I am the fourth-grade mathematician that Wayne Benner was talking about. Now, you may not know who I am, but you do know my technologies. I was born and raised here in Bellevue and was an Eagle Scout. I graduated from the Air Force Academy. I led the development of the most complex spy satellite for the United States in Los Angeles for the Air Force. After that, I helped develop, went to test pilot school and helped develop the first plastic-winged airplane, the X-29. I developed the first reusable rocket for the United States 10 years before SpaceX and showed them how to do it, flew it the first time like that. The mid-core space experiment, the most complex experimental satellite since, a hyperspectral satellite, and launched the first DoD payloads from Russia. I then arranged to help arrange, I got out of the military and helped arrange some of the first people to fly to the space station as space tourists, and after that, I had the opportunity to help develop some of the first flying cars. The technology I'm working on now is 21st-century technology and resonant science. My mathematics skills are beyond reproach or any kind of anything like that. I have requested multiple times to meet with the Secretary of State, Wayne Benner. They have declined every time to talk to me about this. According to the Heritage Foundation, Nebraska is 43rd in the nation for election laws. That's seventh from the bottom. Following the law in Nebraska is a very low standard for following our Constitution, is required by every election official's oath of office in providing we Nebraskans free and fair elections. Nebraska law, right now, allows for very easy cheating by offering election registration and voting data to anybody. And with that voting data, you can figure out who hasn't been showing up to vote very often, you can fill out a ballot, a copy of a ballot, and you can mail it in, and it doesn't matter. We've got plenty of affidavits in Nebraska Voter Act projects showing people who were whistleblowers, in fact, we've got one right here in the audience, who is a whistleblower saying, these signatures don't match the ballot, don't match the person that was signing in for this. So we know that there's extraordinary amounts of fraud, and I can mathematically prove to you, it occurred in every single county in this state. Registrations are off the chart here in Nebraska. By the way, it doesn't matter how accurate your machines are, how accurate your county is, that you double-check, that you triple-check, that you check 10% if they're fake ballots. It's counting monopoly money. If it's fake, it's fraudulent, and it doesn't matter. Registrations are off the chart here in Nebraska. We have affidavits from people who are double-registered. We had an explosion of registrations between 2016 and 2020, and some of my follow-on speakers will show you the details of that. The Secretary of State is actually proud of our 88% registration rate, something Nebraska had never done before. We'd never gotten above 67% registration rates in this state until the 2020 election. You know, if you think at this point in time that your vote counted during that election, I'm going to tell you right now that there were ghost voters that canceled out every single one of your votes. Get used to it. Yes, we in Nebraska do have ballot box stuffing. In Cass County, the worst county, it was over 800 ballots. He told you that 2,500 people had died in Nebraska during that time that we collected that data. First of all, why were we collecting the data in January? That's election data. They should have had a list of all the people that actually voted. But when we went to the Secretary of State, he says, oh, no, 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 we don't keep that. That's not his choice. It is federal law that he keep the election data on who showed up to vote. He does not have it, and he'll admit it. He says, oh, it's a dynamic thing. The January thing, 2,500 people died from our 4,000. Minor problem, only about 900 of those 2,500 people were voters that actually voted. So no, that's not true. If you get it back, it's 900 from 4,000, we've still got 3,200 more ballots than there were people that voted in the state of Nebraska right now. So if we go to do this, the state is required to provide us a summary of votes cast that's not results. In the law, it states both, and this is law 32-1032. They must provide us, this ballot has these results on it. This ballot has these results on it. They have never produced that. We've requested it in this county, and we've not gotten it. In addition to that, one of the things you're going to see is that this is what a legitimate election and an illegitimate election look like. Legitimate elections have straight lines across the top here. That's because the ratio of votes, as you count more and more votes, turns out to be the same because that's the overall average for people voting in that election. If there's cheating...
That's your time, sir. That is your time. We'll go on to the next commenter.
Connie Rankie, Lancaster County. As far as what Larry was talking about, this is absolute proof. I've showed it here before. When there is a slanted line, like what he showed in that graph, that means a ratio is being used. One vote isn't one vote, and they push it to get to a certain point. That is mathematical proof. It's proof that our elections in Nebraska are fraudulent. I'm another one of those dumb people that Benner talked about. I actually went out and knocked on doors and took the voter roll and verified if that person said they voted. And in that process, I found multiple ballots. I don't know if you heard him say, yeah, there were some reports of multiple ballots, but the first one sent in is the only one that counts. I'm appalled with that. So what about the multiple ballots? This is manipulation. This is manipulation of the database. This is manipulation. It's maladministration. If somebody's getting four ballots, there's something wrong. And then counties saying that they didn't, they didn't send them out. Counties are saying that. I did not make this up. I knocked on doors and got this result. They were in ballot envelopes, they were multiple ballots. We need answers on that. In 2020, there were 50,000 more ballots than ever since 1972. How many of those ballots are fake? One of the hardest things for ballot traffickers to do is to get an envelope. It's easy for them to photocopy a ballot, but the ballot envelopes, that's the hard part. That's why I believe multiple ballots were sent out all over, because they needed the ballot envelope, and they could stick in the ballot that they wanted. Notice, the highest ever came after Wayne Benner and the Secretary of State's office put in these new election machines. They also put in these things to the Secretary of State's office. I talked about this earlier. These are all state contracts, ESNS voter registrations, not controlled by the county. Noink, which helps, Noink and these other programs, Center for Internet Security, that's Albert Censors. Albert Censors. Secretary of State received awards for innovation for being one of the first states to put in Albert Censors, leading the way for other states, because ESNS works closely with our Secretary of State. This Albert censor is on the internet 365 days a year. You need to talk more about this, 24/7. The SOS says these machines are not connected to the internet. Ask him about Albert Censors and these background programs that are constantly running. Who's going to draw the line? Who's going to say, I'm not going to allow cheating? I'm not going to allow mail-in ballots? Is it the legislators? No, they didn't even put photographic voter ID into place. Is it our election commissioners and clerks? They seem to have allegiance to the Secretary of State. There's no problem here. There's no problem. It comes down to you, the commissioners, taking authority over your county and stop the funding of ESNS election processes like per-ballot processing, coding, programming, election machines, and software. And I don't want multiple ballots funded.
That is your time. Thank you.
I don't want them funded.
We'll go to the other podium now.
Thank you. I'm Iris Dutton, I-R-I-S-D-U-T-T-O-N, from Ponca, Nebraska, and I'm here to talk about the rural-urban divide and what we can do to, and how Lincoln, Nebraska, and what happens here at the city and in the state legislature affects us in the rural areas. I will delete some of the comments, and I do have copies for you to read about my full testimony. The connection to the internet, my husband has testified in Ponca of the vulnerabilities of computers. Having worked with space launch in the Air Force, we were invited to a supervisor's meeting in March with Mr. Benner present, and were not allowed to speak or ask questions. We have continually been asked to be on the, we have continually asked to be on the agenda and have been refused, but allowed five short minutes of public time, never allowed on the agenda to fully explain what we have been talking about today. I've listened to testimonies for the last two years in the state Capitol and here now. There was a young man from China who's lived in Nebraska for 20 years. He has testified as a computer expert. There is proof of algorithms being used in Nebraska, and he feels like he's back in a communist country. Our testimonies are being ignored, and evidence is being suppressed. In March, Mr. Benner said that all thumb drives are military-grade. This is misinformation. Many clerks save their county's money by purchasing their thumb drives from Staples or other outlets. Again, this leads to vulnerabilities in our elections. Also, Colonel Sean Smith testified two years ago that these thumb drives are not being even used in the military because of their vulnerabilities. Also, another person in my area of the county said that they were not allowed to count 200 ballots from a small election, and Mr. Benner threatened them to remove both the clerk and the commissioners. We desire to have a form of hand counting at the precinct level for greater accountability to be given that is right for free and transparent elections, and we are an all-mail-in county. On updating voter rolls, the affidavits have shown evidence of multiple ballots being sent to citizens. In my county alone, during one of the five-minute testimony times, there was a person that received six ballots, and another time, a testimony was from someone that had for four years tried to update her voter registration. She was getting four of her grandchildren's ballots for four years, and it's still not resolved. So I just want to share that information with you. Clint Curtis, who started the first algorithm in Florida, has gone all over America to show the problems with the algorithms, and he has convinced two nations in Europe to go to hand counting because of the problems with these machines. And I'd like to end with quotes from the latest Center for Rural Affairs newsletter about the rural-urban divide. While politics at all levels are currently strained and difficult, distancing ourselves from one another is unlikely to be the solution. We must continue to engage in democratic processes and work toward a society where everyone can be a full participant. We trust you, our leaders, to bring justice to problems and that our election systems are done in fairness and honesty. I grew up in Nebraska, and Lincoln has always been my favorite city in America and travels all over the world. You've kept this city beautiful, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Come back to the side of the podium.
Good morning. My name is Ed Ostlund, O-S-T-L-U-N-D. I'm a pastor at the United Methodist Church, appointed to St. Paul Downtown and the campus of UNL. I am here with Justice in Action, and I have been asked to prepare a statement from someone who could not make it this morning. Good morning. My name is Tina Alder, T-I-N-A-A-L-D-E-R. I am able to join this meeting today, and I've asked someone to read my statement. Thank you for your time and attention. My son was taken into custody on April 2021 and was held at the Lancaster County Department Corrections located at 3801 West Oak Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska. All members of my sons and my family live and work here in Lincoln, which was great for visitation and moral support. My son was not given his own cell, but was instead housed in a room with dozens of other men and slept on a mat on the floor, I feared for his safety daily. It is my understanding that Brad Johnson, Director of Corrections, has requested over $1 million go towards housing inmates at other facilities. Without hesitation, I can state that if my son had been housed at another facility other than the one in this county where he lives and where his crime was committed, the outcome would have been detrimental for these reasons. I could barely afford an attorney as it was. If mileage as well as the additional time for travel for the attorney to see my son were included in the cost, we definitely would have needed to use the public defender. Has this additional cost been considered for the public defender's office? Travel to visit my son would not have been a feasible option. My family's on a fixed budget, and the additional cost of gas plus time involved would have left my son without his support system. While I worry daily about my son's safety here in Lincoln, I cannot imagine how different that would have been had he have been placed in a facility in a city I am not familiar with. Not to mention, who would I hold accountable for his safety and health? If something serious happened to him, would he be transported here to a Lincoln hospital? And who would have the final decision and take responsibility? The amount of time to transport my son from a distant facility to the courtroom here would have caused unnecessary stress. My son was transported from the jail to the courthouse quite a few times. Because inmates are shackled, there was no way for them to use the restroom or eat meals. While I understand some may say that my son deserves whatever he has to go through because he committed a crime, I would respond back with, what about treating all humans with dignity? Where would the dignity be in transporting some inmates to facilities away from their families and support? Who would make that decision? Loading up inmates to transport and house them in other facilities sounds similar to what farmers do with their livestock. No human should be treated this way. Would like to know if anything has or is being done to rehabilitate inmates? It is my understanding that Justice in Action has provided a detailed account of how diversion could help resolve the overcrowding at our county jail. While my son would not have qualified for this option, there are many incarcerated individuals who could. Diversion would provide hope to so many, and has been proven to lower reoffending rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Hanson, and I'm a member of the Justice in Action. I have done prison ministry for 14 years at our Saviors Lutheran Church, and today, I am here to voice my support for diversion. I support many of the comments that the people from Justice in Action have already talked about. The one part that I would like to discuss with you this morning is County Attorney Pat Condon said that he would agree if there was housing connected with diversion. Well, right now, in Lincoln, Nebraska, we have the Kia House, which supports people with mental health issues, and it is... with mental health issues, and it is a nationally recognized program that has a peer support component and a wraparound program. And it would be a way for us to be proactive in helping people that have mental health issues, or, and we have found that people that have drug alcohol issues and mental health issues really are connected, that, that we are actually addressing some of the underlying issues that have caused them to be incarcerated. So it is my hope that you can think about the money that we spend, that we spend, the $1 million for, for the Lancaster County Jail, be thought about for maybe expanding like other facilities like the Kia House in Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joe Nygro. It's nice to see all of you.
You back in the chambers.
I'm, I'm here as part of Justice in Action. I did want to say a couple of things first, though. Commissioner Amundson, you announced your retirement next year, and I want to thank you for your service, and particularly, particularly your leadership on juvenile justice reform. You really have made a difference in that particular area. I'm not going to talk about it now, but now that I'm retired, there are some issues with the post-employment health funding, and I would like one of you to call me, because I have some ideas on how to improve it. But I am here to speak as part of Justice in Action. I was a public defender for 39 years, and I know, I mean, we built a huge jail, and now it's full, and Brad Johnson doesn't know what to do, so he's asking to move people to other counties. And I can tell you, as a public defender, the problems when you house people in other counties are enormous. Families can't visit them, attorneys can't visit them. I mean, it was, it's hard enough for attorneys to go out to West Oak compared to when we had a jail here on campus. And, and, and so it really, it really hurts, and then, and then there are times when there's transportation issues. Well, if a client doesn't come to court now, you can reschedule the same day, but not if they're in another county. And so I, I really wish that we could find alternatives. In the short term, there, you may not have any choices, but long-term, that's not a good solution. But my bigger fear is a year from now that county corrections will come in and say, we need to expand the jail. And I'm telling you right now, don't do it. We filled that jail. There are better ways to take care of people than incarcerating them. Diversion programs are better at resolving recidivism and preventing recidivism, and we should be trying to expand diversion, and this organization is obviously advocating that, and it, and it really falls on the county attorney. We need to expand eligibility based on prior record, and particularly the types of offenses that are eligible. And hopefully, that will happen, but I know that's not going to happen overnight. But that, but expanding diversion is a better solution than sending people to other counties, and it sure is a better solution than building a bigger jail, because if we build it, we'll fill it. And I'll just speak, because Justice in Action is focused on diversion, but I would also say, as a private citizen, the other thing that needs to happen is we need to end cash bail, because what we do is we incarcerate people because they're poor. And our jail has 34% of the people there consistently are black people, and 4% of Lancaster County. This system is racist, and we need to change it. And, and the pressure, the judges set bail, but they rely more on the county attorney's recommendation. Keep the pressure on the county attorney to increase diversion and to end cash bail. And I'm saying that partly as Justice in Action, partly as a private citizen. And I, I know that you're interested in these things. In the short term, you may not have any choices, but sending people to other counties is a bad choice, and building a bigger jail would be a colossal mistake. It costs diversion programs $5,000 to $7,000 a year, and, and it costs, for one person, and it costs, it costs us over $35,000 a year to incarcerate somebody. So at a lower amount of money, so you can save taxpayer dollars and you can improve community safety, because diversion programs reduce recidivism much more than incarceration. Incarceration makes people worse. And it's not, we're not talking about community safety, especially when you're talking about people who are pretrial detainees, they're presumed innocent. So I urge you to consider every alternative as you try to craft the budget, and, and I know in the short term, it may be difficult, but long-term, you have to think about what we're doing as a county. And so I urge you to, to really explore all the other options before we spend money on incarcerating more people. And, and do call me about post-employment health.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to this podium.
My name is Mary Hamilton, and I am from Seward County, but I have a property here in Lancaster County also. So what I want to talk to you about today is my, my personal experience, and I think it's very important that people, all people in this whole room should be concerned with election integrity, because without it, all these problems that we have right now, a lot of them are caused because the right person didn't get voted in to office. So I think that everybody should be concerned, because if you want your person to get voted in, you have to pay attention to what's going on. So in 2020, I'm a teacher by profession. I do have two master's degrees. I do a little bit about math. I've taught math. My daughter is an engineer, so I'm, I think I'm a little above the sixth grade level of math. But I just wanted you to know that I got a job because I thought the school was going to be shut down because of the pandemic. So in 2020, I decided to go get a job for the 2020 election with the Lancaster County Election Commission, and they hired me. So one day I was working, and they gave me this giant tray of ballots, and they told me to scan them. And so I was in the back room, and I scanned each envelope, and she also said to just glance at the signatures to see if they matched and put them in a different pile. So I looked at the signatures, they didn't match. I put them in a pile, I put them aside, but when my supervisor reviewed them, she said, send them through as matching. And she said, we're not the signature police. That's what she told me. So I just wanted you to know that, you know, without a signature, without a valid signature, how do we know that all of these ballots? How do we even know that they're real ballots? We don't know, because anybody can sign it. And we had, you know, we just, we know that they don't match, because one of them looked like a mountain. It didn't even look like a signature. It just, somebody just scribbled a mountain on there. And I was supposed to look at that and say, yeah, that's, that's the signature that matches. It did not match. And so I'm just wondering, how much fraud did we experience in 2020? A lot, I can tell you that. I saw a lot of things happening that I didn't like at the election commission, and I just don't think that that was right at all for them to do that. And I do think that there are some, you know, some things that shouldn't go on in the election. And I also knocked on a lot of doors and talked to a lot of people, and one lady said she went to vote, she was told, you already voted. And she said, no, I didn't vote, and they wouldn't let her vote. And so they give you these provisional ballots, but they say, the provisional ballot is gone. And I do know, because I worked in the office with Brian, and he told me at the time that we have more provisional ballots than we've ever had, ever. And he, and I was privy to phone calls, because I overheard his phone calls, where he would call someone and say, what is this address? This is a warehouse. You don't live in a warehouse, do you? And the, and the person on the other end could not verify their address. So we do know that there are a lot of ballots being sent out to people that don't have valid addresses, that aren't valid, and there's a lot of fraud going on. And when Trump gets elected in 2024, the opposite party will be like us. They will be livid, and they will be mad. But you know what? That's what happens in elections. That's what happens when you have stolen elections. There are consequences, and sometimes there are worse consequences than what we'd like to know. So I just thought I would let you know, that's what I experienced. I worked in the election office, so I know what happened. So thank you.
We'll come back to this side of the podium.
Good morning. My name is Susan Smith. I'm a pastor at Antelope Park Church of the Brethren. My parishioners and I believe that we need to work for prevention, keeping people out of jail while keeping public safety at the forefront. I will try not to reiterate things said already, but I want to testify today to my experience, which goes back to when I lived in Florida, came here at the beginning of COVID. But I was an elementary teacher for 11 years, mostly in impoverished neighborhoods by choice. So I had many kids in my classrooms who were affected in some way by having a loved one incarcerated. So I've seen the effects this has on kids in a real way. During my time in seminary, I did an internship with the Florida Dream Center, doing community ministry as well as jail ministry, which I continued for four years, going into the women's section of the county jail, praying with, studying scripture, watching video sermons, singing with jail, with women in jail, which most of them were there, just like we know, because of substance abuse of some sort or some action due to it. And many of them were mothers. Mostly, we just listened. And even though these, this wasn't the overwhelming thing, and this overwhelming thing we heard over and over again was their need to, for connection with their family. During one of our meetings to prep for this meeting, we were told that many of the people that will be sent to other jails in our county are women, because the overcrowding in the women's section is so great. So this is going to be a huge effect on families in our county. Also, research says that three-quarters of the people in the county jail are between 18 and 25, and we know diversion looks at past incriminations to see if they can get diversion, even if it was 20 years ago. And we know the research done with young adults not being able to think through consequences. So this really concerns me, especially as a pastor. The hardship, though, placed on families, I will tell you that the one thing you could hear over and over from the women in jail was whether they had hope or not. And providing commute, time for connection with their family is what gave them hope. If we want to work, if they want to be able to work on themselves, seeing their children or hearing about their children or, or their loved ones is vital. When I was doing jail ministry, it was a voluntary program. They didn't have to come there, and they were never forced to participate, but most of them did. Why? Because they were searching for healing, for wholeness, and they wanted to get their kids back or be involved with their families in some way. And when they're caretakers, they are vital parts of our society. They talked about their kids, how they missed them so much, couldn't wait to be with them. They knew that they're, it was a burden on other family members, and if they had hope, they wanted to work towards getting better. Even if they knew they were going to be headed to prison for a time, and some of them were, if they had that hope, they were working to get better. Some were able to visit their families, and their stories were so touching. And I'm telling you these things because I know the impact on families. Connection between family members while someone is in jail is vital. Visits weren't always allowed by caretakers, but any contact with them, telling them, these moms, about their kids was so important, and no doubt on the whole family. And we know what is good for families is good for the community. The long-term impact of having mothers far away from their families would be so detrimental, not just to the women in jail, but to the kids and the caretakers, especially to those who couldn't afford to make the trip to jail a few hours away. The same could be said in a sense regarding fathers. What about their spouses, girlfriends, or those taking care of their kids? What hopes would be diminished if they're not connected to their children? Not being able to call due to money issues, too. What you decide to do proactively rather than reactively here today could have lasting impacts, not just on families, but on our community. We need to try to keep people out of jail, which is what diversion, drug court, and other programs can do. There are other places using great restorative practice, justice practices, which here is only used for youth. So we should be investing in prevention, because again, what is good for families is good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to this side.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Eric Hill. I am the vicar at First Lutheran Church here in Lincoln. My home congregation is Resurrection Lutheran Church in Gretna. Hopefully, God willing, in a couple of months, I'll be an ordained Lutheran pastor, serving a community near you. I, too, am here to lift up my voice, to align it with Justice in Action, to speak out against this budget increase of $1 million for boarding contracts. It is difficult for me to understand why we would pursue a downstream solution to capacity limitations in our county jails when there is evidence to support upstream diversion alternatives that have demonstrated efficacy in maintaining safety for the community while better serving individuals who are at risk of becoming part of the mass incarceration machinery. As a side note, as I was standing in line, a thought occurred to me. For the last 20 years, I have worked in the mental health field, primarily for CHI Health at Lasting Hope Recovery Center. I have witnessed time and time again, patients that come in there who are dealing with homelessness, poverty, unemployment, instability in housing, and caught within the justice system, and it becomes a vicious cycle for them in which they can't break free. And so they constantly find themselves in danger of once again becoming incarcerated due to their circumstances. Are our county jails reaching capacity because the behavior of our citizens is becoming increasingly criminal in nature? Or are our jails reaching capacity because we are underutilizing current division programs? Have we given up on expanding alternative diversion programs that address these mental health needs, addiction issues, ongoing symptoms of chronic poverty, housing instability, systemic racism, and our failure to provide a living wage? When we know that diversion programs cost less than incarceration, doesn't it make sense that we become creative and we work together to explore what those programs would be? Finally, I know if I was in this position of figuring out how to fiscally, be fiscally responsible in using our tax dollars, and I understood that my choices were between increasing the budget to house people out of this county where they'd be deprived some of the services that they currently receive, or coming together to explore creative ways to increase and develop new diversion programs, I know the choice that I would make. So I hope you will make a good choice as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am Reverend Elizabeth Kocher, E-L-I-Z-A-B-E-T-H-K-O-C-H-E-R, serving Lutheran campus ministries at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. I am also a part of Justice in Action, and I am here this morning to offer public comment on the proposed over $1 million budget increase to the corrections budget, which is set to be allocated for boarding contracts to house our residents in other counties' jails. I represent a population of young adults who are discerning who they want to be when they grow up, and perhaps equally as importantly, where they want to be. So on behalf of my students, I challenge this board to envision a Lancaster County that is more just, equitable, fiscally sound, and focused on community reconciliation. As has been mentioned before, jail placement outside of this county does not promote a fair justice system for people who are incarcerated. As distance creates financial barriers, this will separate people from their support systems, their families, and their lawyers. When we consider the reality of racial and economic discrepancies for those facing incarceration, this additional barrier of distance is a sign our community is going in the wrong direction. I voice today that a more faithful response to the need for more jail cells is to instead invest in community-based alternative practices, our Lancaster County diversion programs that divert people away from jail and eventually prison, and instead focus on other alternatives for individual accountability, public safety, and community reconciliation. As a large increase in our budget is passed for more jail cells, I encourage our elected officials to consider a better long-term vision for our community. And as a bit of end to my time, I would like to ask the commissioners here today to make a motion to extend our public comment time to accommodate our folks who are here to provide this comment. So I will offer instead that request for a motion to extend public comment time. With that, thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you. We'll come to this side.
My name is Reverend Catherine Giebers, and I'm here today as a citizen of Lancaster County as well as a clergy member, who cares about the welfare of our city. I'm here also to advocate for those experiencing incarceration. I want to voice my support for diversion and treatment opportunities instead of contracts that outsource and rehouse those who are experiencing incarceration. Let me just be brief. If recidivism is our goal, when we cut people off from their support systems, it reinforces behaviors which first led behaviors which first led to imprisonment. If we create barriers in relationships, it makes integration back into our community and society more difficult, which also increases rates of recidivism. We all know that treatment and diversion reduces the likelihood that someone will end up back imprisoned. I would like us to make decisions with humanity in mind. I know we all care about reducing crime. I hope we can also think about what it means to be rehabilitated and what steps and finances that we steward will add to that ultimate goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Penny Stevens. I live here in Lincoln. I've been a voter since 1976, and I've been a voter in both Democrat and Republican parties. So I wasn't going to speak today, but Mr. Bennetta didn't address a huge issue. He did not speak about the 25,000 missing mail-in ballots that Secretary of State Evnan announced the day following the 2020 presidential election. This confession from our very own Secretary of State was filmed by an Omaha television station. And my question, why didn't our Secretary of State take the time to investigate these missing ballots? 25,000, to put into perspective, 25,000 is every man, woman, and child in the city of Hastings, Nebraska. So like, just think about their voices not being heard. That's, that's big. So this is a complete failure of ballot management. When he got and announced on this video that these were missing, he had, he had already turned in the counted votes for Nebraska. He, in that video, was bragging that they were like one of the first to get their, every single vote counted. But what about those 25,000 missing ballots? Instead, he bragged about, you know, having tallied all the Nebraskans' votes. And again, the day after we voted, instead, in this video, he blamed the voters for the missing, for losing their own ballots, that perhaps they were sitting on their messy countertops. And that was based on no investigation. This is just wrong. If you want to see this video, you can go to 25k m i a dot U S. We have preserved that video for you. There's a lot of other information. And I motion that you give us time to speak. I push a motion for a hearing for those concerned about voter integrity, so we can take care of the people in the prisons, and we can take care of all of this, because our elections are for everyone, and we need to have integrity in our elections. Thank you.
We'll come back to this side of the podium.
Hi. Excuse me. Good morning. My name is Sarah, and I'm just speaking to you today from the viewpoint of a bonus mom of a son that was held in Lancaster County Corrections, and also as someone with firsthand experience of serving county time. I was not in Lancaster County, however, it does not remove the thoughts and fears of what I know he is going through. My time was served in a county that was an hour and a half away from my family, so I fully understand the feeling of not having a support system close by. It's a very desolate feeling, and the money it takes just to make a timed phone call was taxing, and visitations were sparse due to travel costs. I was left feeling isolated and deprived of the comforts of familiarity. And if persons that are merely awaiting trial are forced to leave the county just to be housed due to overcrowding, which Justice in Action has provided a reasonable request to help lower this concern, then I fear that they will end up losing hope. And when incarcerated people lose hope, dangerous effects could be expected. I unfortunately had to witness this firsthand when I was incarcerated. A gentleman committed suicide, and I stood there as I watched the gurney wheel pass me to take him out of the jail. These people are still human beings that deserve their rights, and they need to have their attorneys, they need to have support, and they should not be sent even further away and isolated even further. This idea just appears to me to be absolutely absurd and a complete waste of money. The suggestion of the diversion program by Justice in Action is a far more suitable means to address this. People can still maintain hope, and it has proven that diversion laws repeat offenders, leaving more space in jails for those who do not qualify. Thank you for your time.
That is the full hour that we had allotted for the public comment. Thank you all for being extremely orderly this morning, and I'm sorry we couldn't get through everyone.
I would make a motion to extend public comment one time for 30 minutes.
Is there a second to the motion? I see no second. The motion fails for lack of a second. Mr. Clerk, please proceed with the announcements.
Announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July 20th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. B, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold the following meetings on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, in Room 112 of the County City Building. One, the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And two, the budget hearing. C, the county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. D, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners is also, the meeting is also broadcast live on L-N-K TV. L-N-K TV is available on ALO Channel 2 and Check Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L-N-K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item I have is adjournment.
Move adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shulte?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries for one. We are adjourned from the Commissioners meeting.
The Commissioners have two more meetings, and but we'll let's take a three-minute break again before we go into the Board of Equalization meeting. Thank you.[1044.98]
You're right.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additions and the deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Yeah, nope, you're right. Ignore me.
We are.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. The copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Commissioners, item one is the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023.
Move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Um, just a second, I'm just double checking. I'm going to abstain. That was one I was not at.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero with an abstention. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additions and the deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Item three is the notice of assessed valuation change for property tax, excuse me, for property taxation purposes. For Jeffrey L. and Terry Horst, James R. Gosnell, Jack Estates LP, fifteen parcels, Bridgeport Apartment LP and Waterbrook Apartment.
Dan, so with the Lancaster County Attorney, this was the item we briefed you on last Thursday that these are the Section 42 properties that would have been brought in line with the ones we've already protested. So that's where we're at with this.
Move approval.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I was not able to sit in last week due to conflicting responsibilities. This says green belt on.
We're on item number three, the preceding item. That'll be the next one.
See how easy that is.
So we will get more information then.
Okay, so this is, these are Section 42 housing that we are.
Yeah, in a nutshell, when we first brought this to the board's attention back in January, I believe, when we were looking at kind of a standard income, standard expenses, there were some that appeared to be within the acceptable range of valuation. Based on the order from Turk that came out as well as the testimony at the hearing, we then had some concerns about the other properties that we did not protest and so to avoid any problems, we're kind of bringing them all in line together. So whatever happens down the road, all the properties will move together. If it's a reduction or whatever, they'll all be treated the same. That's, that's the sole purpose of this.
Okay, and so, um, what, help me know, Dan, what the final outcome or disposition's going to be here because, you know, I, I'm getting a lot of feedback on this particular topic.
It's, it's still pending. Actually, right before I came over, I received the Bill of Exceptions, which is the trial transcript. Uh, that's gone up on appeal now to the Nebraska Supreme Court. So the appellate's a Section 42 property. We'll have to have their brief filed in about thirty days and I'll have a chance to respond to that. It'll be expedited for oral arguments, so, um, hopefully maybe by the end of the year, we might have an answer, but that's just kind of where it stands. It's on appeal right, right now.
Okay, and so, oh, go ahead, Sean.
I was just going to say, I mean, long-term, it's a legislative fix. That's, that's like the long-term, uh, what happens this year will, will come from this process and whatever we do.
The business before us today is just to align these with the other properties.
If you remember too, as I remember, right, we had previously done this with all properties that had a value of zero, correct?
Either zero below, um, the acceptable range or even some that were above the acceptable range because some were operating more efficiently than others and why that is, I don't know, but some looked at coming in about a hundred and twenty-six percent of assessed to actual value. So anything that fell outside that, that's over a hundred percent or below the, I believe it's ninety-two percent, uh, we, we protested. Some were at ninety-nine percent, so we said that meets the requirements and so we left it alone. But again, based on the testimony and the order from Turk, we had concerns about our decision in doing that.
Sounds good.
And then, um, what is, what's the difference between these and the ones we already did specifically?
So these, when we looked at initially in January, we kind of said, all right, we're assuming kind of a standard income, standard, standard expense. We do, what does that number kick out? And so we just look at saying, what's it assessed to, uh, actual value and it gives us a percent. So maybe it says ninety-eight percent and then we say that, that's good enough, that that's close enough, it passes, it's left alone. Some were coming in at zero percent, like the current, clearly too low, so those are the ones that were then being protested. One came in a hundred and twenty-six percent, too high. We protested that, that one as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this notice of assessed valuation change. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yeah.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is a notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes, green belt. Uh, the properties are for Brandon and Rebecca Brazee, Amanda and Philip Schneider, Marilyn and Frank T. MacArthur, Anderson Homes Incorporated, John A. Herod III, Martin V. and Barbara Erickson, Jeffrey R. Stolzer, Doug and Carla Malone, Legacy Model Properties LLC, Timothy J. and Sherry K. Kubasek, Richard and Jay and Sandra K. Hozek, Terry and Joanne Workman, Matthew and Vori Spangler, Nathan and Michaela Hab, Lincoln Turf Farms LLC, Charles and Tara Duncan, Donald W. Spilker Irrevocable Trust, Keith K. and Jana R. Spilker, Daniel Bontranger, Timbercrest Ridge LLC, Ward F. Hoppy LLC, Heritage Farms Incorporated, Mary F. Langer, Daniel and Crystal R. Denning, Russell F. and Rhianne K. Anderson, David E. and Janine R. Sealy, Matthew and Camilla Slosson, Southwest Folsom Development LLC, Mark McCall, Maureen Bosch, Christopher L. and Amy M. Ibsen, Kevin and Brittany Larson, Jerarga Bowman Bastani, Herbert J.'s Estate, Adam L. and Suzanne A. Huminek, and Bradley and Geraldine L. Canover.
You have some information you could share with us on this?
Good morning. Still morning. Brian Grimm, Lancaster County Assessor, Register of Deeds. What these are new applications for, um, special valuation for agricultural or horticultural properties. Some of these, uh, were denied in the past. Uh, they had a change of legislation this year which allows properties within city limits if they are being used for those purposes, um, that they are allowed the special valuation. So these will be going from a a typical market value to a special valuation.
There's some pretty big changes on some of these.
I'm sorry?
There's some big changes on some of these. I mean, two of them are losing a million dollars in valuation.
And what the, what the difference is between the two of them is, um, especially if you get into, inside the city limits on a fairly decent-sized chunk of land and maybe it was a commercial value before, um, and, and it's based on the market value of what sells in Lancaster County. Special valuation is a valuation from counties outside of Lancaster County. So like Cass, Odo, Saunders, those counties for their agricultural sales of a sale from Farmer A to Farmer B. Uh, that's how that land value is determined. So there's going to be a huge difference between the two of them because one is actually a market-based and then the, the other one is market that's based on agricultural sales.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is, this is an extension of the legislative change that keeps coming back to haunt us?
The majority of it is, and, and new applications.
It's a lot of changes. I'm surprised no one's here.
Well, I'd be celebrating my valuation went down a million dollars.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, no, no reason to come in and speak about it.
Fair enough.
Does he, I believe they're all going down. I didn't get through, there's a lot of pages.
Yeah, I looked, I, I, that was my impression too, was that they'll, okay.
Okay, we have a mo, do we have a motion?
No.
Move, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Next item, we have two public hearings. The first is on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications for the Capital Humane Society, Eastridge Presbyterian Church, Crossbridge Christian Church, Radiant Church, Christ Place, Union College, Noah's Ark, the University of Nebraska Foundation, the North American Martyrs Catholic Church, Trinity United Methodist Church of Lincoln, School Sisters of Christ the King, the Catholic Bishop of Lincoln, Villa Marie School, and Fellowship Baptist Church.
We will now open the public hearing on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone here to speak on item A, five A? We, is there anyone here wishing to speak on item five B? We can now close the public hearing.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Five A.
Five A. That's what I get.
I'm sorry.
I'll second six A.
Thank you.
Oh.
You're right, six, it is six.
Six A, yeah.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve item six A. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Now, do we have a motion on?
I move approval on item six B.
Thank you.
We don't want to get in the position of voting on public hearings.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve, um, item six B. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero with an abstention. Item seven is the Lancaster County Assessor, Register of Deeds Three-Year Assessment Plan for 2024 through 2026.
Did you want to come and speak to this, please?
Brian Grimm, Lancaster County Assessor, Register of Deeds. The three-year plan is basically what are we going to be doing for the next three years. It's pretty hard to project what we're going to be doing sometimes a year from now, two years from now. But this is just a general synopsis of what we do, what we plan on doing, um, following the state statutes, making sure that we are um, in compliance with all state regulations and guidelines. Um, next year, I hope to have something a little bit more comprehensive in where are we going to be doing our, our valuations for this year, the following year, the year after that. Um, there wasn't really enough time where, uh, we just kind of came into this in, in May. There really wasn't enough time to gather all that data uh, to do a projection into the future. Uh, next year will be a little bit more comprehensive with it so that we can have a, a better idea to, to gauge where we're going.
And this is basically given to us for our information?
It's, it, we're required to.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to approve it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yeah.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Item eight, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county board of equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
I'm seeing no, no one come forward.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a motion to adjourn.
Schulte?
We could let him speak.
Sorry, that would be out of order. We already. No, it would be out of order because we do have a motion and a second to adjourn. Sorry. Please, complete, finish calling the roll, please.
Uh, Commissioner Schulte?
No.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Um, motion carries four, one. We are adjourned.